Good afternoon, everybody. This is a meeting of the planning and zoning commission. Today is July the first of 2021. It is a little bit after six o'clock, and I am calling this meeting to order. First item that we have is roll call, please.
Shall we do it?
Shall we do it? I'll go ahead and do it. Erasmo Villarreal.
Present.
Jorge Dominguez.
Present.
Rafael Duñez.
Present.
Abraham Lugo.
Present.
Johnny Narváez. Raúl Ugaldé Jr., Larry Dovalina.
Here.
Daniela Salpas, Ana Gabriela Villarreal. For the record, we do have four.
Thank you. I know I got contacted by Johnny Narváez. He's out of town. He had some vehicle issues. Ugaldé is still at work. He hasn't been able to get out. And Ana Villarreal, I know, is on work in San Antonio. So...
I make a motion that they do excuse.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? And a second by Mr. Duñez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Thank you. The next item that we have is a pledge of allegiance. If everybody could please stand. I pledge to be the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I guess before we move on, certainly we're going to welcome our new director, Orlando Navarro. We're going to be looking forward to working with you. We expect a lot of great things for the city. And I know that you have an open-door policy for everybody in this community, and we look forward to having a very successful venture with you as planning director.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Just to let you know, I start out the week with evaluating staff. We have a very strong staff, a very focused staff, and we're going to maintain that. And one of the areas, like you said, is bringing in our engineers, bringing in the developers, and open up communication. And our office is open for business, and we're just going to start with that and get that ball rolling, because that seems to be one of the areas of great concern. And we're going to focus on that first.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, the next item that we have is consideration of the approval of the minutes of the meeting of June 17th. So we got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. The next item is, do we have anybody who's signed up for Citizens Commons right now?
No, sir.
All right. Next item is public hearings. The first item that we have is amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning lots one and three, block 367, Western Division, located at 1802 Santa Ursula Avenue from B3 to B4. Who will make the presentation?
Jason will be doing the presentation.
All right. Jason, listen.
There you go. So applicant, applicant Maria Sosa Hernández, the owner, and her representative is Miguel Ángel Aguilarz. Property location is Lot 1 and Lot 3, Block 367, in the Western Division, located at 1802 Santa Ursula Avenue. The zone change request is going from a B3 Community Business District to a B4 Highway Commercial District. Proposed use, commercial, game room slash maquinita. Letters sent out were 23, and we did not receive any for or against. General location, front edge of the I-35. This is the aerial view, both the lots, 200-foot boundary. Street view. This is zoning map, showing B3 all around. This is the future land use, shows neighborhood mixed use and adjacent to medium density. Staff does not support the proposed zone change. Two reasons: The property exists primarily along the freeway, but has residential parcels within 200 feet. The business hours of operations will extend beyond the current businesses in the surrounding area, negatively impacting the residential districts in the area. Proposed motion? Motion to recommend approval or denial to the city council for Lot 1 and Lot 3, Block 367, Western Division, located at 1802 Santa Ursula Avenue from B3 to B4.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change, in favor of the zone change?
Si quería hablar con...
Yes, sir. Pasile. Run up.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Miguel Aguilar y represento a mi mamá, que es Ana María Sosa Hernández. La razón por la que queremos hacer una petición de cambio de zona, ella tiene 85 años, depende, ese es su ingreso. Este, nos dimos cuenta que a través de los años, si le hemos rentado la propiedad, pero pagan muy barato y año con año posee batalla para los impuestos, las taxes, escuelas, fondado, y ciudad. A veces, bueno, a veces, día con día van subiendo, van incrementando. Entonces, nos tocaron la puerta unas personas ofreciéndonos una mejor renta mensual con la que creo y podemos nosotros salir adelante. En este momento tenemos hipotecada la propiedad, porque pues las personas que nos han rentado, los negocios más bien dicho que se han rentado ahí, no pueden pagar suficiente para nosotros salir con el compromiso de impuestos. Otra razón, pues... Como está abandonado, no abandonado, está desocupado, se mete en la gente indigente y están haciendo mucho basura hasta, ya tienen ahí su... Su, ¿cómo se llama? Porque es su casa provisional y ya hay que estar limpiando. Me da miedo que lo vayan a incendiar o provocar un desastre. Esos serían los, por así que los motivos más fuertes para hacer una petición. Y como le digo, es el ingreso de mi madre, que es el único.
Muchas gracias. ¿Alguna pregunta en la comisión?
Al me encanta. Yo estuve revisando todo lo que era el lugar, Mr. Chairman. Y yo realmente no veo ninguna razón, Mr. Navarro, el por qué se niegue el permiso a B4. Realmente, la propiedad lleva todas las condiciones enfrente del expressway. Y el negarle el B4, realmente estamos hasta cierto punto discriminando esa propiedad, Mr. Chairman. La razón que traen ellos es muy buena, aún cuando ellos, antes de escuchar supuestición, yo había pensado que no hay ninguna necesidad de negar el B4. Este, yo pienso que en el interés de la persona, de la familia, de la comunidad y del desarrollo, no solo que el edificio no esté solo y vacante creando un problema hacia la comunidad, sino al contrario, que crea un ingreso para la familia. Yo estoy listo para hacer una motion.
Okay, not yet.
No, no, pero este, ese es el comentario mío, y yo pienso que sí, tal vez podamos darle dependiendo lo que diga el resto del pueblo.
Thank you. Abel, señor Duñez.
Está bueno que hablan el lenguaje del cielo, ¿verdad? Al margen de los motivos tan loables y humanos que nos has expuesto, yo veo que la propiedad está situada en un lugar comercial y que a la ciudad de Laredo honestamente no nos conviene tener predios ni locales vacíos por la problemática que has dicho, basura, hombres, bandidos. Entonces, yo veo una situación geográfica excelente para un lugar B4, Chairman.
Okay.
Y es mi comentario, pero estamos en audiencia pública.
Right.
Is B4 still heavy highway commercial?
Yes.
And so you could have a tire shop, you could have a mechanic shop that operates 24 hours a day and all sorts of things that could go in that location. How close is the residential area?
Across the street.
Next door.
It's south of the property.
Across the street, you mean directly across the street?
And next door.
So at 1720 Santa Ursula, there is a residence?
Yes.
Just north, just north of the site, there's a residence.
O se puede poner lo que haya, yellow levels.
And there used to be some houses that were next to that champagne strip. This is the area where Dr. Blatchek used to have his chiropractic clinic, no? And this is where the Vakero used to be before, many years ago. Is that correct?
That's two one.
Is that the location?
That's two one.
Location?
About two blocks south of Park, so Clark, Sanchez, and then Park right above. I'm not too sure if that's the same location you're describing, but it's within that proximity.
Oh, yeah, that's where the, yeah, that's where that Vakero lounge was.
Yeah.
¿Era ahí, verdad? ¿Vakero antes de hace muchos años? Era Gibson Chiropractor hace muchos años.
Era, era Ángel Chiropractor, ¿ahí, verdad? Hace muchos años.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember now.
Yeah, okay.
Y todavía me duele la espalda.
Te voy a recomendar otro.
Okay.
I kind of have a concern, because I don't know what the indication of the business is.
And this, of this business, what they want to try?
What is, ¿qué es lo que van a colocar ahí? ¿O qué es lo que se pretende colocar?
Como les comenté, ¿verdad? Me buscaron personas que quieren poner maquinitas, pero realmente nos dimos cuenta que si la propiedad se cambia a B4, tenemos más oportunidades de otros negocios, no simplemente eso, que esté abierto para otro tipo de negocio.
Lo que me concierne a mí es que al darte el cambio de zona, se abre la puerta para otras cosas que pueden afectar a las gentes que todavía tienen residencias dentro de ciertos límites del lugar. So, al darte a ti, posiblemente les vamos a afectar a otros negativamente. Y eso es lo que tengo la inquietud de hacer una motion.
If I can make a quick comment?
I think we've had enough comments. Let me have, this is a public hearing. Let me have somebody else.
Wait.
Just a minute. Okay, muchas gracias. This is a public hearing. Anybody else wishes to speak in favor, in favor of the zone change? Is there anybody else who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change? All right, thank you. Now we can have a motion.
Yes.
Close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve the zone change to B4. And I would just make a quick comment that regardless if we change the zone to a B4, they still have to comply with the building department. Whether they want to put maquinitas there, it doesn't really matter. It doesn't really mean that they will do it, because those maquinitas, they still have to comply with the building department and the distance between the residential area. So giving them a B4 will not guarantee that they will be able to rent it for maquinitas. So my motion is to give them the B4, because of the location, and if there's any conditions attached to it, that the conditions go with my motion.
We have a motion.
Second, Chairman.
And a second by Mr. Duñez. All those who are in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Discussion.
I'm sorry. Discussion. Yes, sir.
So you're suggesting that the city and its building permit issuance has a restriction on where maquinitas can be placed within a certain distance of a residential area?
That is correct.
And is it less than 200?
That is, that is correct.
That's correct.
The new...
I didn't hear.
I'm sorry.
Is there a city restriction on issuing a building permit for a maquinitas location? And if there is, what is it?
Are you talking about the residence? It's 200 feet, so they would be checked on that.
They would have to get a variance?
Well, they would have to get a variance.
The ordinance is very clear, Commissioner. The ordinance says that either they comply with the ordinance or they don't get the permit. So the reason I'm agreeing or I'm making the motion for the B4 is because they will still have other options to rent it. I can probably guarantee you that they're not going to get a permit for the maquinitas. I mean, that's only a personal comment right here, because I know the ordinance pretty well. But that's what it is.
May I speak, Chairman?
Okay, yes, sir. We're on a discussion.
Yo creo que al margen de qué van a poner o qué no van a poner, eso requiere unos permisos y una reglamentación posterior. Aquí sobre la mesa está B3 a B4, y yo soporto lo que dice el comisionado Delgado. No le veo ningún inconveniente de pasar de B3 a B4, porque de lo contrario estaríamos dejando la posibilidad de que él hiciera el negocio, el negocio futuro que él pueda poner. Lo estamos encuadrando, lo estamos encuadrando a que siga él con un B3 sin posibilidad de crecer, de desarrollarnos, de tener cosas nuevas. Ya las maquinitas pues no será competencia de una nueva aplicación, ¿verdad? Yo no veo aquí que esté pidiendo un ECUI, entonces soporto nuevamente la motion del comisionado Delgado.
Let's go ahead and have a vote on this. We have a motion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion carries. Thank you. The next item. Amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning Lot 10, Block 288, Eastern Division, located at 2205 Logan Avenue from R2 to B1.
Yes, the applicant is Roberto and Lidia Garza, the owners, and Gilberto González is a representative. Property location is Lot 10, Block 288, in the Eastern Division, located at 2205 Logan Avenue. Zone change request is B1 Limited Business District. Proposed use, expand the parking area for the reconstructed meat market. Letters sent out were 29, 04, and 0 against were received. It's a general location by Clark and Logan. The aerial view. It's a street view. This is a zoning map showing B1 there north and R2, sorry. The future land use has medium density residential, and just to the north of it is neighborhood mixed use. Staff supports the application for the following reasons: The property abuts B1 zoning to the north, although not in conformance with the comprehensive plan designation for this area as a medium-density residential. It supports the neighborhood mixed use by allowing the meat market business to expand and serve the neighborhood. The proposed zone is generally compatible with the surrounding uses and zones. The site meets the lot width 46-feet requirement for B1 zones. Motion to recommend approval or denial to the city council for rezoning Lot 10, Block 288, the Eastern Division, located at 2205 Logan Avenue from R2 multifamily district to B1 limited business district.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Gilberto González. I'm here at South End Jury, and I represent the applicants Roberto and Lidia Garza. And we are in favor of the zone change.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody in the commission have any questions, Mr. González? No questions? Thank you very much for your comments. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor of the zone change? In favor. Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change? All right. What are the wishes of the commission?
I propose motion approved.
Motion to approve. We have a second. Second by Mr. Dovalina. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion carries. Next item, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning Lot 5, Block 823, Eastern Division, located at 1420 North Meadow Avenue from R1 to B1.
The applicant is María del Carmen Ratmell, the owner, and Daniel González is a representative. Property description, Lot 5, Block 823 of the Eastern Division, located at 1420 North Meadow Avenue. Zone change request from a B1 limited business district. The owner wants to extend the commercial area with the abutting property to the south. Proposed use is commercial, with 24 letters sent out, 0 received, 4 against. General location, just north of Guadalupe, Long Meadow. This is the aerial view, the corner of Meadow and Garfield. Street view. This is the zoning map, showing the rest of the block as B1 and the one parcel remaining as R1. Future land use. Then staff supports the application for the following reasons: The property abuts a B1 zoning to the south and west, although not in conformance with the comp plan designation for this area as a low-density residential. It supports the neighborhood mixed use by allowing the limited commercial zoning to expand and serve the neighborhood. The proposed zone is generally compatible with the surrounding uses and zones. The site meets the lot width 46-feet requirement for B1 zones. Motion to recommend approval or denial to the city council for rezoning Lot 5, Block 823 of the Eastern Division, located at 1420 North Meadow Avenue from R1 single-family residential district to B1 limited business district.
Let me ask you real quick. There's currently an office building there?
There was. That house is no longer there, though.
It's vacant property now?
Correct.
And right to the south of that, there's a commercial strip?
Correct.
All right. Okay. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor of the zone change?
Good evening, I'm Daniel Gómez, and on behalf of Mr. Ratmell, the property owner, we're in favor of doing the zone change.
All right. Anybody in the commission have any questions for Mr. Gómez?
Let me ask a question real quick, Mr. Gómez. Does Mr. Ratmell actually owns the property right next to it?
Actually, we're doing a replac right now, and we're trying to incorporate this...
You're going to incorporate it? Thank you.
All right. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor of the zone change? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change?
Do you want to make a comment that since the printing of the packet and our online received, informed, we did receive one?
One against?
One, sorry.
Okay. Anybody wish to speak against? All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
I move to approve, subject to the conditions at the...
Second.
We have a motion to approve the zone change, and second from Abby Lugo. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion carries. Next item is amending the zoning map of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately 73.01 acres out of a tract of land conveyed by D2 Martinez Paving Company, located north of Highway 359, 1.57 miles east of Loop 20, from AG to R1A. All right.
The applicant is Jorge and César Martínez, and Martínez Paving Company are owners, and Gilberto González is a representative. Property's location, 73.01 acres out of the tract of land conveyed to D2 Martinez Paving Company, located north of Highway 359, 1.57 miles east of Loop 20. Zone change request is R1A, single-family reduced area district. Proposed use, residential, single-family. Letters sent were 14, 04, and 0 against. General location, Long East 359. This is the aerial view, the property recently annexed into the city. This is street view. This is zoning map, currently zoned as ag. Future land use, shows ag as well. Staff supports the application for the following reasons: The property is expanding the city limits to incorporate unplanted and undeveloped land into a residential district, although not in conformance with the comprehensive plan's designation for this area as agricultural district. The zone change increases affordability housing availability east of Loop 20. The proposed zone is generally compatible with the surrounding uses and zones. Motion to recommend?
Mr. Chairman, you could see that out on 359, there's a push to do more residential out in that area. For the longest time, this was industrial-type uses. We're starting to see a change and more development going out this way, which is, you know, the positive trend that we'd like to see. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change? In favor?
Good evening, commissioners, chairman, staff. My name is Oscar Castillo, representing the owner, and we are for the zone change and here to answer any questions.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Castillo and the commission?
I have a question, Mr. Castillo.
Yes.
I noticed that the land, it's surrounded by unplanted land. And before we give a change of zoning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, how are you going to access the land?
There's already an approved master plan, so we're right now working on the... There're going to be two main axes, 120-foot right-of-way, that is part of that master plan. And there's going to be a 60-foot right-of-way that connect to 359. And that's how we're going to, those are going to be the two main axes.
Yeah, this is something we had seen before.
We dealt with this before, didn't we?
Yeah, he was, he was going to go to Tex- dot to clear the entrance. That was the last time on the master plan.
That is correct.
So, yeah, and there's another parcel that is coming in here too, right next. The next item, I believe it is the front of that part of this.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, all of them, and it ties it all together.
I was going to say, the next item, we'll have that.
With the text, we're just going to start the process. We've been talking to them, and the TIA was prepared with them. And right now, we're going for the connection to the main street. Usually, text likes to see what's going to be on the commercial properties before granting any access, so we will do that at the moment where we know what's going to be there. But as far as the residential, yes, we should, we're going to submit actually tomorrow for the formal submission, but we've been in talks with them.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Yes. Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. Actually, what I'm, I think, what I meant is that who owns the property that they're going to have the access to? I know that there's going to be an access, and there's going to be an entrance by, approved by text. Now, where I was going is, do you own that entrance or you're still negotiating to get that tract of land as an entrance to that property? Because, Mr. Navarro, how can we go on R1 if we don't even know where they're going to be coming in from? So would that, do you have that documentation ready?
If I may, I'd like to respond to that. I want to say it was about two P&amp;Z meetings ago, we had presented the Gator Point Master Plan that was brought in by the consultant Peua, and it was discussed during P&amp;Z, and there were some issues where they needed to coordinate with text. They were having some, you know, just the alignment, and there was also some concern on the next item with regards to the B4, that they would need to coordinate heavily with text on those connections or entrances into the commercial lots that they're going to propose in the front. And they do own the strip that they're showing there all the way to the highway.
They own all the way?
They own it all. That was my question.
As a owner, Commissioner, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Castillo. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against, against the zone change? Yes, sir?
I'm not against it. I am, is this the property? I'm going to ask him on the record. Sure, property there.
Can you please come up to the podium and state your name for the record, please?
My name is Jose J. López, and I just wanted to verify if I received the letter that you guys were going to have a town meeting. That's the only reason why I'm here. Is this the property that used to be owned by the owners, by any chance?
You know, right next to it. If you can, if you can address the chairman, he'll...
Okay, I'm sorry. Is this the property that you, because I have two acres and...
I tell you what we could do is, can you put the map back up here so you can maybe look at the map and see where your property is located? All right, can you guys point out, look, if you look over here, can you see it? Or he's pointing out to the, that's the area right there.
Yeah. I own it, right where the dotted line is, I own on this side of the dotted line, and I own on this side of the dotted line. That's why I'm both sides.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, that's the area right there.
I have no issue with the rezoning, that's fine. You know, I'm not, I'm not interested in setting it right now. So I just wanted to verify, so, yeah, it's on both sides. Okay, cool. That's fine. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you.
It doesn't conflict, Mr. Chairman. Actually, the entrance is going to be to 359, so...
Yeah. Okay. All right, so I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion carries. Now, the next item is amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately 73.01 acres out of a tract of land conveyed by Martinez Paving, located north of Highway 359, 1.5 miles east of Loop 20, from R1 to B4, highway commercial. Shouldn't that have been described differently?
It was 7.3 acres.
Right?
That's what?
Because it's not 73 acres.
It was 7.3.
7.3. So, okay, it's a typo.
It's a typo.
Okay, okay, yeah. There you go. That makes sense now. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change? In favor?
Oscar Castillo with the consulting, representing the owner, and hello, the commissioners, chairman, and staff, and we are for... Oscar Castillo with the consulting, representing the, the owner, and hello to the commissioners, chairman, and staff, and we are for the, uh, change, and here to answer any questions, this is the area just south of the, the.
Right adjacent with the three fifty-nine, yeah, okay, I think we all got it, alright, thank you, this is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change, against the zone change? Alright, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second by Commissioner Duñez, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against, motion carries. The next item that we have is the review, of the revision of the Pinnacle Industrial Center Master Plan, the intent is light industrial. The purpose of the revision is to reconfigure units six and ten to thirteen.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, for the record, the applicant is FM fourteen seventy-two Investments, Kirk Cross President, engineer of record, Gilpin Engineering Company. Approximately seven hundred and seventy-two acres located west of FM fourteen seventy-two and north of the Pico Road. The zoning for the sixty-six law development is M one, and the proposed use is light industrial. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed master plan. Comments from planning and water utilities. Traffic safety, and Texas Department of Transportation. And proposed motion.
Alright, explain something to me, what was the revision they're looking for, cuz I, I was trying to figure it out, but, if, if, if I may, if I could put that.
So, what, what they're doing, if I like, originally, they, these here were actually in different phases, so they combined this section.
Okay.
And this section over here, that's the only, the street alignment and everything else is remaining.
Every, there is, okay, that, thank you very much, okay. Alright, does anybody in the commission have any questions for the engine, the engineer of record?
Just for Rafael, well, is that gonna impact the movement through the streets by, by putting it all together, Rafael?
Well, I mean, the, there will be significant traffic generated through this, and one of the comments from Tex dot, and I don't know if it can be back on the screen, is that, uh, Tex dot is requiring, uh, taking, uh, traffic impact analysis.
Yeah.
For this development, which is very important.
Yeah.
So, one of the things is that, yes, while you, we are looking at their master plan, there might need to be a little bit of a hold on the phasing, for the phasing to come online, to ensure that they comply with the T I as it comes forward.
We got that in the control on traffic?
And it is, it is one of the comments here on, on the stack.
Okay, yeah, i- is there a widening project for FM fourteen seventy-two, and do we know the status of what that is? Fourteen seventy-two or, or were penitas?
Fourteen seventy-two.
Not a widening, but there's a proposed project with the turnaround lanes from the World Trade going all the way out to I T C.
And when does that let, or is it already let?
It's just a proposed right now.
Is that a dual turn?
It's multiple U-turns.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
That's the only thing, um, the, the movement of FM thirty-three thirty-eight, the realignment of that because of the H R entrance as well, but no widening projects.
It's just a dual train, right, yeah.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Commission, Danny McGee, City Traffic Director, um, I am not against this, uh, planning, um, this, uh, master plan, by any means. Or, I feel we're, we're very critical, uh, point here, we need to be very careful about how we let this develop, uh, they've already developed, I think, one phase of this, Rafael, if I'm right?
Like phase one?
And approving the master plan, then the, the different phases come in, once those phases come in, a study after that really locks, you know, closes, locks up your hands, so. We need to be careful how we do it, on the opposite side of the road, where they're planning to put their street, is where Tex dot and the city are working right now to do the Charth Ruthinger Road. So, we have a, a lot of cr, critical traffic that's gonna be coming through there, there is no, uh, study that says that, that intersection will be able to support seven hundred acres of, of more, uh, truck traffic, uh, at least with one entrance. It says, as an example, if you're familiar with just the development further south, where Pan American is.
Yeah.
And World Trade Center, that has two exits, and that, that's even smaller than this, and look at the traffic we have there.
Yeah.
So, it's not a question of saying yes or no, but it's about being smart about how we do this, and that's what we need to study for. I asked them for one also, in an effort to allow the, one of the phases to go through, we said, well, we'll agree to do that phase, we gave them our, our approval letter, but it said, no more phases will be allowed, so even if you do the master plan, then we shouldn't be allowing more phases until we know exactly how that master plan's gonna look like. It's one, one entrance with a very, very large road on the other side, who knows if we can handle the traffic? And we're gonna paint ourselves into another kill and type of, kill and remind road type of situation.
Alright, there's a comment here from Tex dot, it requires a T A, uh, it requires them to do a traffic study before, I guess, anything you go forward.
Yeah, I asked for the same, and I did wanna remind the commission, it's a very, very subtle point, but just because it's on Tex dot's road, they have to get our approval too.
Sure.
It's, you know, it comes from both, so I wish your Tex dot approve, prove, they have to get the city's approval too.
So, when they provide you with a traffic impact analysis, and, and you feel that the road needs to be widened, or some adjustment has to be made on the road, do you hold up the permitting until that occurs, or you deny the permitting until it occurs? How, how do you deal with it?
I, I, I need to add one thing before, preface the whole thing is that, a T I is not to tell the developer, you gotta build all this infrastructure, it's not about that, it's about letting Tex dot, letting the city, letting the developer, so we can all work together to try and get to that point, so we don't get to the point where we say, you can't develop anymore cuz we're not ready for you. In the past, that's what's happened, you know, going back to that same development I mentioned earlier, we had two connections, and what did we do, we just kept growing and growing, growing to the west, and there was no thought put into it, it's the same thing here, if we don't do a good study, we're gonna get to that point. And we just don't know what that is, it could be we can develop five hundred acres, two hundred acres, who knows?
Is there a city ordinance currently that governs what you're suggesting happen?
As far as what?
Of, of, uh, l, doing impact analysis and then, uh, taking the developer and holding him up until that, uh, improvement is made, so that you don't have that issue?
From, from, uh, capacity point of view, no, from a safety point of view, as an engineer, I think I can do that, but we don't want, we don't wanna get to that point. It, it, I, I'll give a good example.
So, your, so your authority extends to the fact that you're looking at it from a safety issue, but from the point of there being any teeth tied to it, unless you have an ordinance, there isn't anything.
Well, let, let me give you a good example, a developer comes in, utilities, what's the first thing they ask for? How much water, how much sewer are you gonna need? A, a, a study is done routinely, it's the same thing with this, the streets is, is another way of carrying capacity. So, as an engineer, that's what my job is.
The, the thing is, they gotta do a study to figure out what is the solution, if any, and how are you gonna resolve traffic issues in this particular seven hundred acre development as it, you know, totally builds out? That's why he's saying, you know, there are potential solutions in the future, but it has to be studied. The H R Ruthinger Road may be a solution, maybe, I don't know, that's why they have to do studies. Uh, we all know fourteen seventy-two is at overcapacity.
But, but you, you're not gonna have any authority, even if you do the traffic impact analysis, to, to do anything, because you don't have a mechanism.
The first thing, remember, when you approve a plant, all the departments have to sign off on it, if all the departments don't sign off on it, it doesn't get approved. Okay?
One of the, if I may, Mr. Chairman, real quick, one of the, uh, one of the problem that I see when we, uh, when we combine the intersections of the development, putting one section all together, and they built in phases, actually, they will not produce the, the, the exit and the movement out of traffic, as it's supposed to be when you're building completed phases, that's the problem I see there, but we already approved that, so.
Well, this is, uh, where, where, do you know where the loves travel centers?
South of Vidalcan.
South of what?
Vidalcan two.
Pero donde sale ahí? Aquí, hacia abajo.
Bottom, bottom, right corner.
So, where is the street that crosses, uh, at Loves?
Just right above it.
So, to the point, the traffic point, uh, and Mr. Duñez's, his comments, without the traffic analysis, there won't, we won't, we're not protecting ourselves from the growth, we, we need that analysis to tell us how the, the volume's gonna be for that area. So, that's a document that's needed, so that if there, we need a second outlet, we can get to it quicker than not. If we don't have that information, we're just gonna be winging it as we go through this property, and this is, this potentially could be a high volume of traffic. And so, that's a concern of the traffic department, make sure that we have that information, so that we don't just have one salida and, and, you know, we have lines of traffic everywhere. This way, we can be talking to the developer, and they can, they can, they can make the adjustment needed in order to.
We could provide another route out.
Absolutely, and Tex dot and the city use that information so that they can be talking.
Exactly, not only for safety, we need it for safety, because i- imagine there's a problem inside, how do you get everybody out the same way?
Let me, let me ask Chico Mingus.
Is the coal storage at the top, where that road is?
The, which one?
The coal storage.
U S code?
Yeah.
Yes.
U S code is this corner?
It's where, it's not further up?
No, U S code is here, Empacadora.
That's the one that's currently being constructed?
Mission.
Yeah, they're, they're, both of them are being constructed.
Chief, uh, in terms of fire protection, one way in, right now, one way out, is that a good standard for, for you guys?
Well, it's, it's different from the residential to the commercial, once it comes to the commercial, it depends on the size of the building. So, once, uh, once the building comes in, depending on how big it is, whether it's free, or then they'll determine whether it's to that, that, that lot itself, whether it needs one or two ways in. But I know, like, the streets around it, we reviewed this, and we had no comments.
Yeah, no comments. For the whole.
For this whole, uh, what is it, uh, uh, I guess, uh, is it a master plan?
The master plan, yeah.
We reviewed, and we had no comments, which means our examiner said it met code, but when that one comes in for planning for that building itself, buildings over a certain square footage were required to, to means of egress from that property itself, but we were, we were good with this one.
Okay, so it's from the actual property that you need to.
Right, that, that would be a second review once it comes through, uh, to the planning department.
Okay.
I wanna comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, thank you, chief.
Tampoco tuvimos comentarios en la milla trece, y tenemos un problema serio en milla trece, es muy parecido a esto. También tenemos un problema en, en Interamérica, y es muy parecido a esto. En Quinlan teníamos ese problema hasta que lo abrieron, abrieron la calle a Lucho Eni, pero antes era un problema muy parecido a esto. El que nos prometan una segunda vía, una siguiente vía, no garantiza que la vayan a hacer. Yo preferiría irme más despacio, a que trazaran esa vía de salida, ver la seguridad de la gente. Son trailers, no son coches, la gente no puede salir corriendo, son trailers, y las trailers estorban, arrancan más despacio, son más complicadas para dar vueltas. Yo sugiero la vía alternativa, que nos la presenten ya como un hecho, no como un potencial de futuro, gracias, chief.
Okay, thank you. We don't have the engineer of record here. Yep. Anybody for that engineering firm?
No.
No? Alright, we don't have the engineer of record here, I mean, I guess the best issue we can do right now is maybe table this item? I mean, and, and it's up to the commission, whatever you all decide, you can do one or two things, we can table this item, or we can deny it going forth, whatever you all.
I was gonna make a comment on the roads, the, the Riverbank Road backs up by the city water plant, and that was something that had spoke about previously, and then the other one to Al Pico. So, this is another exit, and then this is a city water plant, there was conversations previously, but if we did that river road, and they would respect that line, because that exit out leads to the future FM thirty-three thirty-eight intersection changeover. And that's something we, in the future land, or future thoroughfare plan, we'd kind of coordinated to see if this was something feasible, to give some car access only versus tractor trailer, and that's been on the fence for the past couple of years.
Yeah.
So, that's just the other comments I was gonna make.
But those aren't even planned yet. Correct?
Excuse me?
Those aren't planned yet?
No, correct.
They're just ideas.
I think the best thing we can do right now is table this item, I mean, but it's up to you commissioners, that would be my recommendation at this point.
Agreed.
But, you know, whatever y'all wanna do.
Yo estoy de acuerdo contigo, porque si no tienen una salida ahorita, va a pasar lo mismo que ha pasado en las otras, en las otras, este.
Industrial parks.
Okay, and we need a motion to that effect.
Motion to.
You make a motion, second?
Motion to table.
A motion to table.
Second.
Second, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Let me, okay, the record.
Discussion.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote against it, I, and, and Commissioner, real quick, I, I know that we haven't opened when, when got the, the act. Uh, I feel that when we approve the whole subdivision, by not granting this, we're holding the developer, cuz we're ready for a condition that he has to comply with the, with Tex dot, are we not?
Yes.
So, if he complies or he doesn't comply, it doesn't really matter, if we, if we table it, we're holding the developer from going forward, see? I think that the engineer should have been here.
Exactly, that's the reason I am suggesting this.
And if you wanna table it for next meeting.
I am tabling it due to the fact that the engineer is not here.
That is correct.
That is why I made that recommendation, so we have, are you okay with that, we have a motion on the floor?
Uh, for tabling, uh, I would like to make an amendment to table for the next meeting.
Time's certain for the text.
So, he can be here, so he can be here and explain.
So, it's got an amendment for the next meeting, uh, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those against, motion carries, thank you, the next item is the.
We'll, we'll call the engineer and we'll be specific on the comments, that way he understands what, what we asked of the commission.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, the next item is preliminary consideration of the plan of R and W Ride subdivision, phase five, the tennis residential.
No.
Mr. Chairman, I believe you might have missed.
You're right, you're right, the next item is, I'm sorry, the preliminary consideration of the plan of its internal subdivision, the tennis residential.
Uh, for the record, the, uh, overview of the applicant is Papjo LLC, the engineer of record is Portas Engineering, approximately ten and three-quarter acres located east of Highway eighty-three and south of the City Boulevard, the zoning for the sixty-eight law development is B three and R one, the proposed use is residential. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plant. Comments from planning. Engineering, water utilities. Traffic safety, parks and leisure. Utility coordination, and Texas Department of Transportation. And the proposed motion. And, uh, for the record, there is a request for variance that is.
We have a request of variance here in front of me?
That's correct.
Uh, for the street land, alright, the engineer of record, can we?
Chairman Duñez, Portas Engineering, um, we, we're here on behalf of this project, uh, we, first of all, we'll talk about that, uh, the request for a variance. The block length is twelve, uh, hundred and thirty feet, uh, we understand the ordinance calls for twelve hundred, we're requesting for a variance on that, so that we.
What's the maximum length that you have right now?
It's twelve hundred.
No, that you have on the plan?
We have twelve thirty, twelve hundred and thirty.
So, you're thirty feet over?
Thirty over, so we're requesting a variance on that.
Okay.
Uh, the other item that's, uh, on several, several comments, but we'll just address the one on planning, it's planning number two. It's, uh, they're asking us to recognize the subdivision master plant south of us, which is Las Adellas, it has a stubout coming into the bottom of our subdivision. We're fine with that, we'll address that, but we just wanna clarify, I don't know if this overhead works. Does it work? As long as we can clarify with planning. I mean, I'm seeing it. There we go, as long, I, I'm. As long, I, I'm, I'm speaking to planning department and then I'll follow through with the rest of the departments. We just wanna clarify that the, the developer is willing to comply. Here's the, the, the master plan that was recently approved south of it.
Yep.
As long as we're talking about coming in through here and then tying into a T like that, which is logical, I believe that that's what you all want. But, uh, if, if that's what's in mind, yes, we're, we're fine with that, we can, we can provide that. Is that what you all were looking for?
Yes.
Okay, I would propose the same comments, uh, I mean, as, as long as we're on the same page, yes.
Let me ask traffic engineer, you, Mr. McGee, would you come up? Just to make sure that we're all on the same page here.
Mr. Flora, Danny McGee, traffic director.
The, uh, what you're seeing up there on the screen, is that more of this what is being proposed?
Yeah, we, we had two different, I guess, uh, ways of getting in and out. We're still waiting for the study to be done, the, the test to finalize that. But that's under last, uh, submittal, is that street, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
I did, I did wanna bring up another point though.
Sure.
Uh, there's a, I guess to me, something that's even more major is you can see a connection that goes out to Highway eighty-three. That connection right now is, uh, is a connection to the old abandoned US eighty-three. I'm not sure how that ever happened, but it does not connect to a, a, a standard street right now. That, uh, it, the road is like twenty feet wide, it's deteriorating. It should either be improved, I'm not sure by who, because this, there's other subdivisions that were allowed to connect it. Either that, either that or connect all the way to US eighty-three, that needs to be straightened down some, someday. But we keep adding more and more houses to it, more and more traffic, and that needs to be looked, looked at. We brought that up with Tech dot and there's really no answer forthcoming, but like I said, I think it's something that needs to be taken care of soon.
But that's Tech dot right of way, correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
Yeah, but it's, it's our city, we're, it's our city street that they're tying into. And we're, we're allowing these subdivisions to go on, really it's like a path. If you'll take a look, I don't know if anybody wants to bring up Google Maps on it, but it's not more than twenty feet wide. I mean, every other street, we, it's gotta meet our criteria, but in this case, we're letting it fall between the cracks, as they say.
Well, the, so, and Tech dot is, let me ask this real quick question. Tech dot is requiring a traffic study for that whole subdivision to get out, right?
Uh, so, they are, it's, I'm the comment.
So, and I guess that's, you know, in, in, in what we're trying to get at here right now is obviously, he is tying a subdivision into an existing roadway that is a public right of way.
Right.
Uh, that is, uh, controlled by the state of Texas, Tech dot. So this study that they're requiring or asking for, I guess, should address it.
Yep.
In terms of how they take care of that.
Address the amount of traffic, but, um, I, I don't know if it's the same landowner that did the original one. So why would this landowner be compelled to connect the street to US eighty-three? I, I don't know if it is or not, isn't.
So, well, but the only way to connect out is to get to that access road. And then you'd have to cross that access road to figure out how to get into the main eighty-three.
So do, do you have a non-system roadmap that, uh, that designates all of the non-system roadways that Tech dot has inside the city? And is, and is it, and is this still a non-system road?
This is an old access road.
It's just US eighty-three, it's a Tech dot road.
So it's still a non-system roadway and the responsibility to fix it is Tech dot?
Uh, well, they're not gonna fix that road, that's the old abandoned US eighty-three.
I understand, but until Tech dot releases it and takes it off as a non-system and allows the city to take it over, the city really can't do anything with it either. So it's a catch twenty-two.
Well, I, I don't see it that way, I see it as that we're, we're, a- as the plan, planning process, we provide water, sewer, drainage, and streets, city streets for our citizens. In this case, they're coming off a highway, going on to a twenty-foot road that's not striped, that's not delineated, that does, it's not lit. And then they're going into a city street that provides all those amenities.
And the road that you're talking about belongs to Tech dot and is Tech dot's responsibility?
Well, there, there, there is no road, they just connect it to basically an asphalt patch.
So, in, in my experience, when Tech dot no longer uses a non-system roadway, it turns around and gives the right of way of that on-system roadway back to the city. And if that hasn't occurred, then the responsibility still lays with Tech dot. It never goes to the city unless the city acquires a right of way off of the road system. I've, I've had that situation occur before.
Okay, well, I, like I said, we have a disconnect between two functioning roads for this subdivision. And we're bringing more traffic into, that's what made you worry about it.
Something probably has, has to be addressed by the N P O.
I was just about to say that.
Look at that.
Yeah, you're gonna have to look at that, but at this point.
Like I said, my, my point is just to bring it forth, that the citizens know that.
Sure, I mean, you have a valid point, thank you for your comment, thank you for your comment. But it is, it is something that we do need to look at, uh, you all need to look at that, uh.
We do.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, if we're on the same page about this, we're fine with the rest of the comments.
Okay.
And we look forward to your congruence with that.
Thank you. Does anybody have any, any questions for the engineer? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman has noted.
All right, you make a motion to approve now, you also will, uh.
Yes, we'll grant the variance.
You're gonna get the variance for the twelve hundred, all right, variance for the street. All right, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
And the second, Commissioner Guanias, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, who's against? Motion carries, thank you. The next item, preliminary consideration of the plant of R and W Wright subdivision, phase five, the intended residential.
For the record, the applicant is Laredo Amanecer Homes Limited. The engineer of record is Sherfy Engineering Company. Approximately eight point two acres located west of Egido Avenue and south of Loma del School. The zoning for this fifty lot development is R one. The proposed use is residential. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plant. Comments from planning and engineering. Water utilities, traffic safety, parks and leisure. Utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
All right. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Frank Estella with Sherfy Engineering. Uh, we concur with all staff comments, I just wanted to get some clarity on the comment from traffic safety in regards to block length shall not be less than three hundred feet. Uh, our blocks in this particular phase all carry over the length of three hundred feet. And I was just curious to where the comment was coming from.
Over three hundred?
Over three hundred, yes, sir.
Those are hits, some new color.
There is one particular section where it's about two ninety, but that's a, that's a question of width, not length. So I just wanted to clarify, just make sure that, that that is correct, because all the rest of them are over three hundred feet.
Orley? Traffic, wanna come up?
Good evening, Director Danny McGee, is the traffic director. Um, I'm not too clear on the details as far as this. Uh, there, there is a, a city ordinance that requires that all block lengths be three hundred feet.
Right.
However, we have not been, uh, enforcing that stringently, because the, the streets are just designed differently. When that, the, the three hundred feet comes from the old days of the grid system. And it's so, as long as they meet side distance requirements, we're never, most of the time letting it go, go through.
Okay. Clarify, is that gonna be your strategy?
That, that'll work.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, what are the wishes of the commission?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those against, motion carries. The next item is preliminary consideration of the plant of Laro Garcia Ayers, intended is industrial.
For the record, the applicant is Garcia Ayers Investment Group Limited. The engineer of record is Daniel Gomez. Approximately seven point thirty-six acres located north of Jaime Zapata Memorial Highway and west of Booms Town Street. The zoning for this one lot development is M one and the proposed use is industrial. General location. Aerial view. Street view, this is the agricultural facility on, uh, Jaime Zapata. And the proposed plant. Comments from planning, engineering and water utilities. Traffic safety, utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
That's, you said that was the agriculture facilities there, that's got the pens and everything?
That is correct.
And the dipping bats?
It's just never planted.
It was never planted, that's true, 'cause it goes way, way back prior to eighty.
That's right.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Yeah, I'm Daniel Gomez, I'm Daniel Gomez Engineering and I'm representing the, uh, the owner and the, uh, Texas Department of Agriculture. We, we concur with the comments.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Gomez? All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
Make a motion to approve, subject to the comments.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lugo, second by Commissioner Guanias, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Who's against, motion carries. Next item is preliminary consideration of the plant of the Phoenix Village subdivision, phase ten, intended residential.
For the record, the applicant is AFW Investments Two Limited. The engineer of record is Sherfy Engineering Company LLC. Approximately six point ninety-two acres located north of US Highway fifty-nine and east of Amanecer Road. The zoning for this forty-eight lot development is R one M H and the proposed use is residential. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plant. Comments from planning, engineering and water utilities. Traffic safety, parks and leisure and utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Frank Estella with Sherfy Engineering. Uh, we concur with staff comments, uh, once again, that same traffic note came out. I don't know if it was just kinda one of those copy and paste type deals, but this road's about a thousand feet long. So we just wanted to make a comment that, you know, we, we fall within that three hundred feet.
Let me ask you something real quick, the interest of this subdivision is which gonna be your primary street going in?
The primary street is going to be the one to the, to the west, that's gonna be the primary street right there.
That one is, what's the name of that street?
Uh, I can't recall what it is.
What is it?
Los Altos.
Altos, okay.
Right.
All right, but that area has multiple accesses to get to it, so.
Correct, that, that's right.
Okay, yeah.
It's going through the Tanquecitos area, so.
Yeah, so you have multiple accesses, there's at least three, three good streets out of the four that you can get through pretty easy, at least three.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions, Commissioner Estrada? All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
Make a motion to approve.
Yeah, a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lingis, all those in favor signify, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Who's against, motion carries. The next item is preliminary consideration of the plant of Copper Creek subdivision, phase two, the intended residential.
For the record, the applicant is M R M D Development Company LLC. The engineer of record is Top Site Civil Groups LLC. Approximately eight acres located east of Cuatro Vientos from twenty and north of Worms Road. The zoning for the forty-six lot development is R one A and the proposed use is residential. General location.
Sure.
Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plant. Comments from planning, engineering and water utilities. Utility coordination. Traffic safety, parks and leisure. And the proposed motion.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
E, F and G.
Well, the thing is just.
E, F and G.
E, F and G, they say.
He's got, he's got different phases. We better take them one at a time because they have different comments, okay? All right, so, yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ricardo Villarreal with Top Site, oops, Top Site Civil Group. Must have pressed something here, that's it. Um, we also have the same comment as, uh, my colleague from Sherfy Engineering on the three hundred block length. I will say there might be a misinterpret, like, just, we're kinda interpreting it wrong. Um, I do have a, and I've spoken, I hate to give Mr. McGee another workout up here. But, um, from our previous conversations, I gotta plug you in.
It's a switch.
So this is the, uh, the plat and question. Our understanding from some of the staff was that they're counting this as a length. And that's actually a width, um, of a block. So, um, because other than that, all block lengths are more than three hundred feet. Um, the other phases, which the same comment is in the other phases, what we'll talk about right now, um, have that a little bit more, uh, I guess, shown. And so researching our current ordinance, our ordinance just talks about block length. It doesn't talk about block width. If you research ordinances from San Antonio, other municipalities, they specifically state block width. Um, so, in essence here, when you have a rectangular block, you have a length and a width, right? The length is on, obviously it has to be greater than three hundred feet, so it's probably more than, you know, six slots in a row. But when you start making those turns or when you start coming into the entrances of subdivisions, right? That's where you get, uh, probably a, a different perspective of the way, um, you know, it's being interpreted. And so you have, you have, let's just say for this one, which is the next one, I, 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 I'm just making you make a quick. So when you come into the subdivision, this distance here, right? They're counting it as a block length and that's really not a block length, that's a block width. The length is along the block, so all this, and I just wanna clarify that. We've had that comment before, we've discussed it at one-stop shop to try to resolve it at one-stop shop. But we're getting the same comment over and over. The actual comment that we got was that this was discussed with us and that we agreed to this. We didn't agree to this in the master plan phase. The actual agreement was to punch out some roads that we already have in the master plan. But as far as block length, I think there was a couple of previous projects that had it, we have it on the next three. And so that's what I kind of wanna make sure that either we clarify with traffic or I would like for the commission.
Well, I think it's a good idea, because the way I'm looking at it is that whole street there is one street and, yeah, it does intersect at that loop that you got there. But I understand your, your comment too, I mean, that's my entrance. Uh, the design is, probably, I'm gonna let Dan McGee address it, but.
Hey, Commissioner, Dan McGee, traffic. Perhaps if we look at it from the point of what the intention is, okay? If you look at the connections to the main street, these lots are now a hundred feet wide. Put them back to back, you're two hundred feet, okay? You're going down a major street, now you're gonna have streets coming out at two hundred, every two hundred feet. I, if you're driving down a ma- a major boulevard, you don't wanna have cars turn in front of you every two hundred feet, that's the intent. Uh, as far as length and width, the over it system, it was square. There is no weight, what, width, there's no length, it's just one side, right? But I guess, like I mentioned earlier, we're not looking so much at that, but what we don't want is a bunch of streets come out every hundred fifty feet, two hundred feet. 'Cause some of these are, are getting there close.
Yeah.
If you're driving down, you, it's gonna kill the capacity of the main street. That's, that's the intent, it's not about trying to get these lots to be a certain size, it's just we're trying to protect.
Well, the issue really to me is if you, if that's your entrance and you're gonna put a stop sign right there at the end of that block, then you have no queue and capacity. You got some prime examples right now, you got in Alexander the same situation. You know, it's a disaster. You got a four-way stop right there as you're coming into the last phase of Alexander right now?
Yeah.
Shit, that's horrible.
Like I mentioned earlier, that we're not really intercritical about three hundred, but normally you go in one street and then from there you spread out to all your different streets.
Yeah, I mean, I, I get it, I get it, and that's why.
I did, I'm, I'm, I apologize, I didn't bring a, a copy of the master plan. So you see it, uh, we actually limited the amount of accesses on Isla Mujeres. Um, before we had more access points within the whole master plan. So we limit, we eliminated a couple to suffice what planning, what traffic wanted. Um, but on little pockets that, you know, we, our neighbor, we can't, we can't develop to the, to the east and, or to the west. Um, because we can't connect any roads. So whenever you have a design with parallel streets, right? You're always gonna have rectangular blocks. And that's why the city of San Antonio specifically states they have a width factor. Now, this ordinance came after the grid system. It didn't come in before the grid system. Grid system happened, ooh, eastern, western division, even before, you know, the, the, our, our code book came in. This was actually developed, this part of the ordinance was actually developed by the previous administrator, you know, um.
It was by Marina Zucca.
Yeah, and, and, um, I know Mr. Selman was sitting, Mr. Selman was sitting. Yeah, and, and, um, I know Mr. Selman was sitting, Mr. Selman was sitting there, Mr. Murillo, the old traffic director, they were all there. It just so happened that, in my opinion, the width was left out, because it's obvious, when you have parallel streets and you have one entrance into a subdivision, your width can only be a hundred feet. It can only be that one lot. So, that, that, that really isn't considered a block length. I have, um, an example of where I used to live, 'cause I have. So when you have subdivisions that have one entrance. Oops. Bring it up here. I used to live here in San Isidro. Not anymore, so, in case anybody wants to go after me. So coming in here, you have the main entrances to limit the amount of access points along the major roadways. But when you come in here, that entrance is only one lot deep. So that lot, based off of zoning, you'll never see a three-hundred-foot-deep lot. You'll never even see a hundred-fifty foot, I mean, you can, but those are a dime a dozen of anything. On the norm, you're somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and twenty. Now you're gonna start seeing eighty-sevens with R-one B, you know, so if you do that, so I just wanted to clarify, and I think we're on the same page, Mr. McGee and I, but when we get to one-stop shop, this, these comments are there, and if we have to redo roads, it discombobulates the entire design plan, so on, on, I just want to make sure that in something like this, where this is a block, or this is a block, there is widths on those blocks, and we have to distinguish a width and a length. I, I, so.
It was a good presentation. I knew about that, uh, Mr. Villarreal, and I agree with you, but I also agree that, uh, he's trying to do his job as a member of the city radio, so what I would say is that we leave the comment, when you come before us, we'll do, we'll just, uh, remove the comment, and, uh, and that will not create a problem on the, on the one-stop shop.
And I, I guess that's why I'm here, to, I guess, to remove, to remove the comment. I do understand what the, we get it. We, we also want to try to limit the amount of access points to our major roadways and not flood them in there. We don't want so many turns. We understand that, but ultimately, sometimes we don't have a choice, and we're forced to connect certain roads there. Um, I do sa- I do want to say that that specific comment said that we had already had discussions with traffic again. We've ar- everything that they wanted, Beefalo was gonna connect from east to west, that opened up. Um, also, we eliminated one access point off of Isla Mujeres, so that we, we did, uh, we did conform to. But these other, that, this little technicality, we've ran to it on previous subdivisions. I have it on the, on the next two. Uh, my colleagues had it, um, so I just wanted to clarify that as part of a ordinance thing and an example thing, so.
Basically, your, your entrance is, you're actually connecting to another subdivision.
Correct. This phase.
Therefore, the length of that block that you're talking about is what, about two-hundred feet?
Are, are we talking about?
Because I'm talking about the whole length of the next grade going up, past your subdivision.
Where, where the beef in the?
You have the beef going up, you see? It's about two-hundred feet? Is that what it is, more or less?
It's, uh, it's a little more. Yeah, it's, 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 it's about two-hundred feet.
About two-hundred?
Yeah. And then if, if we go with the length, block length, three-hundred feet, and we, and we look at every side as a length, we're going back to the grid system. So there, there's no possible way.
Very good way of planning.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's, it's great, okay, but.
It, uh, not good for developers, because you lose those lots, but it's a hell of a good system. But I, I, I get what, you know, I see what you're saying. You basically tie it into an existing subdivision, and there's not a whole lot of ways you can do that.
And then on the master plan, when we submit a master plan, that's where we discuss, okay, can you know, instead of tying into a collector here, why don't we make it into an L-shaped intersection where you limit the access points? We talked about that on the, on the, but now we're looking at it at more a little microscope to each pod, and that comment's coming out again, and so that comment's obviously gonna contradict everything that we're doing, or everything that the master plan was already approved, and that's, I just want that, that clarification, 'cause.
Yeah, come on up, he's got a comment. Do what he wants.
I do want to make a few points. I guess, uh, my office is always open to any engineer to come and discuss these comments, and, and Rick has in the past. I'm not sure. I guess he wanted to bring that point up to you today. Uh, we recognize, at least I do, since I've been with the city two years, that there's a lot of master plans that were agreed to and done years ago, okay? My job and, and my intent is not to make anybody go back and re- redesign those. However, there's sometimes there are little changes that can be made, and that's when we ask for things. But for the most part, we're trying to get those master plans, those phases done and over with, and pay more attention to the new ones, so we don't have these kind of discussions in the future.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Villarreal? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
I move to approve. Uh, I thought, uh, Commissioner Dominguez was saying to leave it there, and that we would address it at a later point.
I think it, it has to be done now.
The, the, yeah, the comment is, uh, that, uh, it can be brought to us, uh, Commissioner.
You're approving a preliminary design right now, and if you need that comment in there.
No, what I meant, uh, Mr. Chairman, is that, uh, that we make a motion to approve and, uh, and, and strike that comment. And at any time that they, that they come with us with that particular, and we have the engineer requesting to strike it, and they have, uh, and it makes sense, we will strike it out, see?
At this point.
I'll change my motion to reflect that.
All right, we got that reflected. We need a second, and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against, motion carries. All right, the next item, preliminary consideration of the plat of Copper Creek subdivision phase three. All right? Can you do the presentation over again? Is it? I'm not sure what the comment will get at.
Are they the same comments?
Well, this is gonna be another phase. This is phase three.
Is it just the one comment? One, I'm just saying.
Same comments on there?
Yeah.
I mean, it's up to the commission. I mean, it's the same comments.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be the same. We're gonna approve and strike that comment out.
Yeah.
To, to kind of speed things up. It's the same comment the next two. I concur with all the other ones, same spiel that I just.
It'll be the same comment for the next two.
All right, so, let's go ahead and, uh.
I told you, Chairman.
And, uh, and, and move on that. Yeah, but you gotta do them individually. You want to go ahead and make a motion to?
Yes, I'll make a motion to, 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 um, bring all of them and approve together and strike the motion.
Before we go there, you have, we already opened up this preliminary, so let's just finish it up.
Okay.
All right?
I'll make a motion to approve and strike the, uh, out, the comment from traffic.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? And a second from Larry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the next item is preliminary consideration of the Copper Creek subdivision phase four, intended is residential. All right, we ready for a motion?
Motion.
You make a motion for approval?
To approval.
Striking.
And to strike out the comment of the three-hundred feet.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second and a second?
Aye.
You should, Duñez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against, motion carries. Next item, preliminary consideration of the replat of Lot Two Three and point thirteen acres of twenty-one, twenty-foot wide extra land block nineteen sixty-five into Lot Three A dash one. Lot nineteen sixty-five eastern division, the intended is commercial.
Uh, the, for the record, the engineer of record is Mati Deano. Uh, the engineer is Howland Engineering and Surveying Company, approximately point ninety-three acres located south of Saunders, street and west of Higido Street. The zoning for this one lot development is B-three and B-four, the proposed use is commercial. General location. Aerial view. Street view, the enterprise building. Proposed plat. Or proposed replat. Comments from planning. Engineering and water utilities. Traffic safety, and Texas Department of Transportation. And the proposed motion.
Okay. What was that easement? Twenty-foot easement? Uh, let me ask the engineer here.
Commissioners, we get minutes without an engineering, um, here to answer any of your questions.
What was the easement? Was it an abandoned, is it an abandoned easement or what?
It u- it used to be a, um, like an access easement, but it, it, yeah, it is a bend.
An access easement?
Yes. It was like a road easement. I believe if I'm, if I'm.
That part of Higido Street, is it?
No, it's, it's not, Commissioner. It, it's a, it's a paved street. It's, it's adjacent to a, to like a boxing gym. You can't, you can't see it from here, but you can see it from like the Travis side of the street.
Okay. So it's, it's, you do have access to the other properties here, okay? All right, any questions for the engineer?
Not questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
What are the wishes of the commission? Move to approve. Got a motion? And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is preliminary consideration of the replat of Lot One, Block One, Pinnacle Industrial Center, uh, aftermarket fourteen-seventy-two unit tenant to Lot One A, Block One. The intended is light industrial.
For the record, the applicant is FM fourteen-seventy-two Investments, Kirk Cross President. The engineer of record is Gilpin Engineering Company, approximately eight-point-sixty-two acres located west of FM fourteen-seventy-two and south of Nicholas D'Char Road. The zoning for this one lot development is M-one, and the proposed use is light industrial. General location. Aerial view. Street view. Proposed plat. This is, they're taking an existing platted lot and reducing the acreage from thirteen to eight. And these are comments from planning and engineering. Water utilities, traffic safety, utility coordination, and the proposed motion.
Okay. Who's the engineer?
It's Gilpin, Gilpin Engineering. He's not here.
What are the wishes of the commission?
Move to approve. Got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. The next items that we can take, item nine and ten, if somebody can make a motion together.
I move that, uh, we take, uh, considerate items nine and ten.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we need a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the items nine and ten together.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Anything else, uh, Orley?
Uh, we have two more. Oh, sorry, that's our ten.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you. Oh, no. You were right, they didn't do ten. They said nine and ten, but they didn't do B and C. Them all, we did nine and ten. It's ten A, B's.